Welcome to the Norwood Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Please call a roll.
Ballard.
Here.
Atwood.
Here.
Faulkner.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Scott Dracy.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the approval of the minutes for the last board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Am I in the right spot? Motion by Mr. Atwood, may I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Bryant, please call the roll.
Atwood.
Yes.
Bryant, yes. Ballard.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes. Okay, the next item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Faulkner, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes. Next item is presentations. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President and the Board of Education. I'd like to just let everyone know that every month we like to recognize one of our school buildings and this month we get to hear a little bit about what's going on at Norwood View. So to begin that component, I'd like to introduce our principal, Mr. Lynn Yates.
Well, the moment I heard Dr. Sabo told us in the fall that each school was going to make a presentation of something exciting, something about our school and something that represents our school, and my first thought, I went straight to our MD unit and talked with Ms. Gregg and Ms. Grossman and told them about the opportunity for them to just show the community, just the most, I can't describe this unit. All I can tell you is when I get a headache, I get tired, or I get upset about anything, I just go down to the MD unit. And it's the most wonderful environment and the kids are so special and it's because of the two special teachers we have in our MD unit. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Gregg and Ms. Grossman for our presentation.
My name is Brooke Gregg and I am an intervention specialist over at Norwood View, like Mr. Yates said. I have been teaching in the district for 14 years and I have been with our MD unit for 14 years. So it's gone through a lot of changes and changes up every year based on our kiddos. And just two years ago, we added the cross categorical unit at Norwood View also. And Becca is the one that does that, so just a little bit. Yeah, so I'm Becca Grossman and this is my fourth year at View. I was actually a student teacher before that, so we've been able to work together, the units together.
Some of our cute kids this year. So you might ask yourself, what is an MD unit or a cross categorical unit? So maybe when you were in school, you heard MH unit, which was multiple handicaps, and it's now referred to as a multiple disabilities unit. This kind of gives you the state definition of it, but basically we service children with the most significant special needs in our district. And multiple disabilities means that they have two or more very significant disabilities, so they need an alternate curriculum to access their education. And a lot of times that will include other things, such as adaptive or life skills, speech and communication needs, fine motor, OT services, sensory needs, gross motor needs. And cross categorical is very similar, but...
Yeah, so with cross categorical, we might have kids with autism, with traumatic brain injury, we have kids with intellectual disabilities, emotional disturbance, other health impairment, orthopedic, visual hearing impairment. So we kind of service all different kinds of kids together in one unit.
Another important thing to note, typically in a room like ours, you'll only see a maximum of eight students. You might see a variety of grade levels. Currently, we have kids in kindergarten through fifth grade in our classrooms. And we work closely with those gen ed teachers and give each individual student a completely unique curriculum. So right now, there are 11 kids in our class, the two of us, and three aides, and every single person has a completely different schedule for their day.
Every teacher, every student.
Every teacher, every student. So that's why those numbers are so small and their needs are so significant.
Our curriculum is based on Ohio's learning standards, the extended standards, which are standards for students with disabilities. So ours are based on different grade bands within those.
They take the general standards that everybody else follows and they just break them down into smaller components. And that is what our curriculum is focused around when our kids go through testing. Most of them qualify for what they call alternate assessment and they are also tested on those extended standards. And it's all in grade bands, so instead of just like third grade or fifth grade, it's K to three to five, six to eight, and so on.
So we also focus on life or adaptive skills. We teach in our classroom and outside of our classroom, community skills, different self-help hygiene skills, so they're brushing their teeth in the morning, learning all kinds of things with that, and then communication and social skills. And we practice those, like I said, in and out of the classroom. We try to go on field trips and meet those different needs where they would actually apply in different life settings.
And then in addition to that, each kid has, is on an IEP in a room and they have their own individual learning goals. So those goals could be in the areas of reading, math, fine motor, speech, gross motor, and a lot of times we will cohesively go in on goals with occupational therapist, clinical therapist, or speech and language pathologists, where we will service some of those needs together.
One thing that we really enjoy using is the unique learning systems. And our district has that as a curriculum that we use. We don't use it exclusively, but they have science and social studies monthly units that we use. And they are, again, broken by those grade bands, but then they also incorporate all different academic area skills that we work on. One thing that's neat that the kids really like with that is they have current events. So there are newspaper articles that are adapted for our kids with pictures and they can read through them and learn about things that are going on in the world. And then there's also a SymbolSticks, which is a search engine, and it has visuals that we use for those lessons and then we can use those to create our own content as well. And they're very visual based.
So just to give you an idea a little bit about those points that we just talked about. So life skills is huge in our room. It's not a typical classroom and it's not going to look like one when you walk in. So one of the life skills that we teach are community-based life skills. So this is making our children active parts of the community, helping them to learn how to communicate with others, make purchases, count money, shop off of a grocery list, order their own food. Here they are cleaning up litter around Norwood View. So you'll see us either out and about or we practically walk a lot of places. And one of those reasons is because we have to practice those street safety skills. We stop at intersections, we wait for the walk sign, we look both ways before crossing the street, we walk on the inside of the sidewalk. I know that the MD units, the further you go up, I know they ride the metro a little bit more than we do, but we do do a lot of walking. So it's good, but like just teaching how to mail a letter at the post office. So they might write the letter at school, then we walk into the post office, mail it, and go have lunch while we're out. They order, they pay for their food. It's a little bit of like, the community-based skills would look like.
So we do lots of self-help skills, whether that's in the morning, hygiene, cleaning your face, brushing your teeth, washing hands. We have kids who need to work on toileting skills, so we'll send them on a schedule and help teach them how to take care of that. Putting on coats, fastening buttons, zipping up coats, traveling with materials. So sometimes for our kids, it's hard to organize their binders and Chromebooks and we teach them how to do that so they can go class to class. And then cleaning and cooking. So we actually have for some of our kids a job time during our day where they have jobs each day of the week that they're completing on their own. They're learning to sweep the floor, to vacuum, and do those kinds of skills. If they're washing some towels from the cafeteria, they do that once a week, bring them back, they load the washer, measure everything out, bring them back into the room and fold them and deliver them back. So just keeping them engaged in the building too. And then that middle one, we do lots of cooking activities and we try to let them do as much of that as they can, whether that's reading the directions, measuring, following the steps in order, and we'll monitor that and help them with that, but they're doing a lot of that on their own.
It hits on those fine motor skills too. I mean, instead of us hoping they can for them, they're learning how to use a cane opener. These are skills that they're going to need to take into their lives if they want to live independently. So start going. We also do life skills based on communication and social skills. So I'd say at least once or twice a week, you could come into our room and you would probably see us playing a board game. Or, and that's just to practice taking turns, being good sports, you know, saying something as much as "it's your turn" or "great job." We do like a thankful activity every Thanksgiving where the kids have a thankful tree and write things that they are thankful for and share them. And then we invite like our principal and Ms. Eshman, our special life coordinator, and their therapist, and they make an entire Thanksgiving feast that they have shopped for. And we prepare the whole thing with them and then they serve it to everybody. So just some good ways to get those communication skills in, those social skills that a lot of times our students are lacking because of their communication disabilities.
So we have individual IEP goals for each student. A lot of times we'll have students rotate through individual or small group stations throughout their day and they receive that direct intervention with us, with our classroom aides. We pass around the binder that has individual goals, we'll check through how they're making progress on that. We actually kind of split up how we do that this year. I teach a lot of the reading with Orton Gilham and Brooke does a lot of the math. And then we also teach together different science and social studies groups.
And just important to note that, like I said, every single kid has a different schedule and different goals and different areas. So for us to meet all those needs, we do need a lot of support and we do have to do a lot of things one-on-one or in very, very small groups. So that's the best way we can keep track of their individual goals and needs and make sure that we're getting those minutes that are required of us. And in addition to that, we also, if you want to go to the next slide, we do a lot of co-planning also with our therapists. You can see our PTs up there, we do a thematic like gross motor group that we try to hit on at least once a month. We try to do it weekly depending on timing. You might see kids doing individual work jobs, group work, this is us kind of doing our unique up here. Bottom is like group therapy and other gross motor group. You might see our kids on scooters pushing themselves around and they were making our aides into snowmen there. Yeah, we have our OT here, she's pulling out in a room next to ours. And I did hear Becca's, we've got some of that PT again, but they're spelling sight words and doing exercise, so we're doing it.
So all of our students attend lunch, recess, and specials with their non-disabled peers. We really push for that as a way for them to socialize with other kids their age as well. And if they are able to, they do that completely independently.
And then as far as the general education classroom is concerned, that looks different for every student too, and it might look different for them year to year. So especially while they're young, it's a little bit easier to be incorporated in your general education classroom. And then as that gap gets bigger, it can be a little bit trickier to make sure that it's an appropriate inclusion setting. So again, we love to have that specials time and lunch and recess for them to really have that ability to explore on their own and socialize with their peers. And then when they are out in the classroom, they are supported with one of us or an educational aide so that they can best access that curriculum or what's going on in the classroom. So this is unique that Becca was talking about before. This is something that the district has purchased for us across all of our units, elementary middle school and it works in grade bands. She talked a little bit about the current events, like I think this week our newspaper was that American Idol was coming back on TV. And so it's stuff the kids can relate to. Then they also have like sports news and world news that you can read and we read that a couple of times a week. And then they have different visuals, so we just can't do a sampling of...
This is that search engine I was talking about. We can search for different icons and we might use these for our own assignments, we might use these on communication devices. If we have a student who's non-verbal, they can look at these and use these in a writing activity. And we brought this iPad to show that. They're also helpful for making visual schedules for our kids. A lot of times it's helpful to have a schedule on the wall for them to see visually where they're going throughout their day. Or with some kids, we'll make an independent schedule that they can hold and take place to place throughout the day.
It's nice too because this is actually lead to a program that we use for some of our non-verbal students, so they can, we can use these same pictures, so it carries over across different spaces in their life, home, school. And then they can use it to talk, I don't know if he'll be able to hear, but feel. And then he would be able to pick, like how does he feel? And so if he can't say it, he can tell us, so. That's part of our job is that we get to work with a lot of people. So general education teachers, our awesome therapists and other intervention specialists, our aides are fantastic and we depend on them a lot, parents. And then we have a really awesome program at Norwood View, Adopt a Class. And last year we got paired with the North Fire Department and they come into our class at least once a month for about two hours. And it's always different, covers on duty. And we do a variety of activities with them. Down below, we played a baseball game last spring. Kids all got to invite somebody from their grade level that they're buddies with and then fire runners came and we all played a big baseball games.
So with our classroom, we like to build awareness with our school. One thing that we think is really important is educating other students in our school about our kids and their different needs and their abilities and their disabilities. So a lot of times we'll go and talk to a class about our kids and we'll make it a very open discussion so they can ask us questions, we can hold a conversation about it, and just teaching them different ways of interacting and acceptance and just building that social community among everyone. And one thing that we are looking to start doing is creating a day where we can teach kids in the general education classes about that and maybe have some hands-on learning, what is it like to have a disability? What would it be like if I were blind?
What would it be like if I could not speak? And having them kind of really get some hands-on experiences of what that looks like for our special needs. We did something within a little bit last year and we're trying to go bigger this year, so we're doing it in a group and who wants to come? But with our therapists and we're giving that third and fifth grade right now just because most of our kids are in third and fifth grade, but. And then like Down Syndrome Day, make sure, make sure that the whole building is participating and then rock your socks. And just spreading awareness in general and making sure that the kids are not afraid to ask questions. I think that's one of the biggest things in the special needs community, especially for parents, is just that kids aren't afraid of their kids. So we encourage questions and we provide them the information. We encourage them to ask the kids if they can, go just ask them.
So we just put together a little video of just pictures that show beyond academics
Thank you, teachers. Thank you for doing a great job in caring so deeply. That's one of the great things we love about Norwood is that we're tolerant, we're caring, we're the first of a kind. So thank you. We have a lot to celebrate and one more thing we want to share with you is Gear Up. If we could have our director for Gear Up come up, her name is Jamie Kim.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks a bunch for having me to speak tonight. I wanted to give a little bit of updates on the Gear Up team because we've had a lot of changes in the last few months and then just talk about the work we've been doing this year and the things that we have upcoming for the rest of the year. So we did have Maureen Heiss as a site director. That's why I came on. I've been an advisor for a few years for Gear Up, but she actually moved with her husband across country to spend the Oregon, so now she's having a lot more fun than us skiing and kayaking every day. So I moved into the role of site director just in January and as a result, there was an opening for my advisor position. And then our other middle school advisor actually got a great opportunity with the Ohio Department of Education, so she moved to Columbus at the end of January. So just literally this week, I have kind of reassembled our team. So we have two new full-time gear up advisors. The first is named Caitlin Lott, she'll be working primarily with our juniors and seniors in the high school. She's really hit the ground running with the students and the seniors have all really taken a liking to her so far, just diving right in to help them with all their needs. In the spring, it's really heavy with our scholarship applications and our verifications for our FAFSA's and just doing last minute applications. So she's doing a lot of that work. And then a gentleman named James Carter started on just this Monday. He'll be primarily working with our middle school students and then he'll also be helping with our ninth graders, especially work doing our Ignition, Ignite ninth grade mentor program. I see some of my mentors are in the room today. So they will get to help acclimate him next week to the group this late in the year. But I'm really excited to have two new young people on the team, which I think is really nice. So James is a graduate of Ohio State University and then Caitlin actually just moved up from Florida, but she's worked at a youth center in Florida for the last few years. So she kind of is a little bit already well-versed in doing some primary access work. In regards to the work of Gear Up this year, just today, we had a really big day. We took an entire eighth grade class to Northern Kentucky University because as Gear Up, we really believe in just early awareness of post-secondary options. So I think just having students go on a campus, we don't expect you to remember everything you do that day, but as long as you had a positive day where you kind of saw what a campus looks like, what it feels like, and kind of the opportunities that it can bring. And I see we had a dad come with us today, so Mr. Hill was on that trip with us today. So we took over 100 eighth graders, so it was an awesome day. And at the same time, Caitlin took a group of our senior students to UC Blue Ash because they had to do placement tests, which is one of the many steps in their post-secondary process. So we're really trying to kind of come full circle with the whole post-secondary process for seniors. We've done over, probably close to 10 college visits this year. We took advantage of every teacher and service day to do a different kind of visit and this year we really pushed ourselves to go to schools that were a little further away. So in December, we took, they were on the bus more than they were on campus, but we went to Bowling Green State University in December. This month, we, or I guess it was last month, we went to Ohio University in Athens. So just to kind of broaden the scope of schools that we're seeing, because we are going to forever and always go to our ones that are local here, so the NKUs, UC Blue Ash, UC Maine, Mount St. Joe, Cincinnati State, Thomas More, all the ones that are right in our backyard. We of course will do, but we're going to try to push ourselves each year to go somewhere that we see our students applying to but aren't necessarily easily accessible for parents to take them. So we've been having close to 20 or 30 students on every visit and this is kids getting up at seven in the morning on an off-school day, so it's really exciting to see them embrace going on college visits because I think they're wonderful. We do have some upcoming trips, so we will take a group of students to the Greater Cincinnati Apprenticeship Council Fair. I think that's an awesome trip because they get to see trades in action. And that's such a viable option for students that maybe don't want to go to a traditional two or four-year college. So I really love that trip because they get to see all the different kinds of apprenticeships that are available to students. We also will take students to Cincinnati State and NKU for placement tests because that we've seen can be a barrier to actually enrolling in school. It's one of those steps you have to take to be able to register for classes and go to orientation. Sometimes it's not easy for parents to get off work to take their students, so I love that we're able to offer those trips also. We will take the full junior class to UC Blue Ash on prom day, so they will take a morning visit with us before they go get ready to have fun that night. And then we are also hoping to take a trip to Great Oaks because we know some of our seniors also as another trade option. That's something we wanted to just be a little bit more robust of this year, is showing students all the different options they have, the secondary that might not be traditional. As far as our ongoing Gear Up services, we're doing our Gear Up Mondays in the middle school. We are still every month doing Dave Ramsey Foundations and Personal Finance with our some of the eighth grade classes. I just started getting to do that myself because it was always running... And this is kids getting up at seven in the morning on an off-school day. So it's really exciting to see them embrace going on college visits because I think they're wonderful. We do have some upcoming trips. So we will take a group of students to the Greater Cincinnati Apprenticeship Council Fair. I think that's an awesome trip because they get to see trades in action. And that's such a viable option for students that maybe don't want to go to a traditional two or four-year college. So I really love that trip because they get to see all the different kinds of apprenticeships that are available to students. We also will take students to Cincinnati State and NKU for placement tests because that we've seen can be a barrier to actually enrolling in school. It's one of those steps you have to take to be able to register for classes and go to orientation. Sometimes it's not easy for parents to get off work to take their students. So I love that we're able to offer those trips also. We will take the full junior class to UC Blue Ash on prom day. So they will take a morning visit with us before they go get ready to have fun that night. And then we are also hoping to take a trip to Great Oaks because we know some of our seniors also as another trade option. That's something we wanted to just be a little bit more robust of this year is showing students all the different options they have post-secondary that might not be traditional. As far as our ongoing Gear Up services, we're doing our Gear Up Mondays in the middle school. We are still every month doing Dave Ramsey Foundations and Personal Finance with our some of the eighth-grade classes. I just started getting to do that myself because it was always Brennan and Maureen that carried that role. And I've really enjoyed it. I think it's invaluable to learn personal finance at such a young age and in a more basic form, just to start being smart early, I think is important, just knowing how you could be an entrepreneur as a 14-year-old. It's those sorts of things that it's good to talk to them about. So I really think that is just really strong work. We're always continuing to do our Ignite mentoring program. And that's where our upperclassmen students every Friday are going into ninth-grade advisory classrooms, just to help students successfully transition to high school and just to be a friend. I think it's always good to have upperclassmen that are positive. We will continue to do our Lunch and Learns. This is where we will bring in professionals from the community that just in a very laid-back fashion, you sign up and you come down and eat lunch with us and you get to talk to that professional about their journey of how they got from being a high school. A lot of the times, it's a Norwood grad, which is cool, but how they started, graduated from high school and how they got to where they are today and maybe what a typical workday and a workweek looks like for them. As always, we're doing post-secondary one-on-one appointments all day. So that's mostly going to be Kaitlyn's job where she will make appointments with any senior or junior that needs to do anything and everything. For instance, we have a big scholarship application due tomorrow. So she got back from that UC Blue Ash trip today and she hit the ground running with helping students edit essays or print off FAFSA's or all the small pieces that maybe aren't easy to pull together at home by yourself. So post-secondary one-on-ones, of course. As far as our end-of-the-year events, we'll work closely with our eighth-grade English department to do the Eighth Grade Career Dinner project. So James will help with that project. And then one of my most favorite events of the year is our Senior Signing Decision Day. That's on May 3rd. Everyone in the community is always invited. But that's a day where our seniors who have committed to their post-secondary plan, and that means they've confirmed at their school and they've taken some very tangible steps to show that that's what they're doing, that they're committed. We invite all the representatives from those schools to actually help them do a pledge that shows that they are committed. It's just a celebration of their decision and supporting them in their decision to move forward in post-secondary work. So that will be on May 3rd. Just to give you a little update on our seniors' college application statistics, right now, I think the class is around 157 because it always moves up and down with enrollment. So far this year, they've done over 350 college applications. So that's pretty awesome. And they've applied to over 70 different colleges and universities. So we're seeing more diversity in where they're applying and they're just broadening their minds to look at other options beyond maybe what is just right next door, which I think is awesome. Regarding financial aid, every student that wants to get federal aid to go to college has to fill out what's called a FAFSA. So it's essentially just your financial aid application for college. If you're first generation, it's not always approachable. So we try to be a critical resource to our students by doing a FAFSA completion night or doing a financial aid parent night. We'll bring in a professional. This year, we brought in an individual from Miami University. So it's really nice to have someone there that is exceptionally knowledgeable in the field because that's what they do every day. So so far, we've had over 70 seniors complete. We've probably had closer to 80 start the FAFSA, but waiting for taxes or other documents. So that's a continuing moving target. So right now, I think we've hit the number that we hit for last year's class already. So we're in a really good trajectory on our FAFSA's too. And that is one of the number one indicators on whether a student will actually enroll and start school, is making sure that their financial aid is in order. And then in the corner, I just gave you a list of some of our most popular schools that our students are applying to. So we always have a large number of seniors that will apply to UC Blue Ash, to UC Maine Campus, NKU. I will say, this is the first year that we've had over 20 students apply to Ohio State. They came into our school in the fall and did an awesome program called MAPS where they brought in three or four of their staff and a current student to work with our students on their essays, on their applications. And then they actually get this special code that helps them be considered with other students that have taken advantage of the MAPS. So we've seen a lot more students get accepted to Ohio State this year, which I think is just awesome because it's sometimes a school I can feel intimidating to apply to. So that's been really cool. And then all of our other usual assessments like Xavier and Rice State and Bowling Green are having a good number of applications this year, too. Do you guys have any questions?
Anyone that applies to the University of Kentucky, are we encouraging them to apply to Tennessee also?
No, I haven't had anyone pick the big orange school yet this year. I have one that mentioned it and I don't think he actually submitted. So not yet. I'm a supporter of the SEC. That is where I went. So, you know.
Thank you, Mrs. Kim. I sometimes say I ended up at college because my mom and dad were good at doing paperwork and that FAFSA can certainly be daunting. So thank you to Gear Up for all you do to support our parents, but our students in making that next step. That's really important work and we appreciate that. I don't want to steal the thunder, but we have a couple more really big groups that we want to celebrate their excellence. So I'd like to bring up our coach for the seventh-grade boys' basketball team, Adam Reynolds, and the cheerleading coach, Morgan Love. They have some good news to share.
Cheerleaders, you can come up, too. We're all in this together, right?
Guys, line up over there.
Girls, come on.
All ladies. Just spread out. Why? We gotta get pictures? How's everybody doing tonight? Very good. I'd like to congratulate all the Rising Star students and also the athletes as well on their accomplishments this year. I think this is awesome, what the board does. This is the first one I've been to, so just kind of taking it all in as I go. My name is Adam Reynolds. I graduated here at Norwood in 2007. I'm not going to talk about myself that much. I definitely want to congratulate all these athletes right here and cheerleaders as well. We started out, I think we won our first 14 games straight. We had a great season. Then we ended up losing one game. It was actually a home game. In the locker room after our loss, looking at these guys, a lot of emotions, some tears, things like that. And I just kind of looked at them and I told them, keep the brotherhood together, keep the family tight. And ever since then, we've just been on a dominating performance. We had a three-round tournament. I think we ended up winning on average about by 12 points each game. It just shows a testament that these guys fight. These guys work extremely hard and also they work when nobody's watching. For all you athletes out there who are looking to be successful, what you do, it's what you do when nobody's watching, okay? I've been a testament to that as well. I've lived that my whole life. Just remember, when nobody's watching, that's when you become successful. I'd like to thank the cheerleaders as well. I can remember every free throw. You hear them banging on the ground, having fun, things like that. I think I remember a couple cheerleaders crying as well after our loss as well. So I can't tell you a group that I've been a part of that I haven't been more proud of in my life. Feels great coming from a Norwood grad as well. I've never won a championship here at Norwood. So to give these guys a championship and to bring one to Norwood, deep into my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. So I was kind of thrown into this situation. The end of football season, they said, hey, the coach is moving up. Matty's on the team. I need you to come coach. And I'm like, oh, I don't know about that. But I mean, it was the best decision I've ever made. These kids, they really are special. They come, you know, come to school, work hard, come to practice, work hard, and then show out at the games. I myself am a Norwood graduate. I work in the district and coach in the district. These girls even, I mean, I'm lost for words. They are just great. I like to share this story. When I, I had 48 girls try out for basketball season. I can take eight per squad. So that means eight seventh graders, eight eighth graders. That was a hard decision to make, to cut a lot of girls. So I emailed the teachers and I said, hey, I want some character reviews on this list of girls. And all of these girls really made the cut. They said, once I sent out the final list, they said, I'm not sure if you have a cheerleading squad there. I think you might have the academic team. So, and I mean, they showed, you know, that effort all season. I cheered when I was here at Norwood as well. I've never met a team of boys and girls that are so, that work so well together. It was very separated and it normally is, you know, it's two completely different sports. But these boys really made sure that the girls were celebrated as well. And my girls felt every loss, celebrated every win. So yeah, for that, I'm very, very grateful. Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you to all of you. We certainly love to be boastful and proud about our league champs. We have more to celebrate and that is our middle school eighth-grade wrestling team. Coach Keeling and Stegmeier, if you're here, if you could come forward, talk a little bit about your eighth-grade wrestling team.
Okay, I'm not going to be long. A lot of my guys couldn't make it tonight because they play other sports. So I'm just going to talk about our season. We started off the regular season, we went seven and three in a dual tournament. Wrestling works a little bit different. You enter tournaments, which is a separate record, but our dual tournament going team against team was seven and three. And all the schools we went against were Division One schools and us only having 11 guys. And in wrestling, you have 14 weight classes. So every match, we're giving up 18 points, able to battle back and finish with a seven and three record. One of the tournaments I want to talk about was the Walnut Hills Tournament, in which we had 26 teams. We had four teams come in there from out of town, like a team from Nashville came all the way up here. And that was probably the biggest tournament some of these guys had wrestled in and they were a little bit nervous. And the first round we went through, we won pretty handily and we end up finishing in the top four, losing to Princeton, who was the runner-up in the tournament. And all these teams have not only all 14 weight classes, but they have two guys in each one. And us, we're just a little Norwood coming with 11 guys strong, finishing in the top four. These two guys that are here are two of my hardest-working guys, both who went to the district tournament. Seth just came up a little bit short of going to state and Jeremy, who qualified for state, he'll go this weekend up in Youngstown. He'll be coached by his dad, who's our youth coach. Jeremy's also a 3.8 student here at Norwood. So he's one of the guys that, you know, I counted on a lot, not only because of what he could do on the map, but his behavior in the classroom as well. So me being a first-grade teacher at View Elementary, I used to always tell the guys, you know, like, you know, Jeremy was a standard right there that you have to get it done in the classroom if you want to compete with me on the map. And a lot of them really responded to that. And a lot of guys, they knew if they needed help, they'd go to get homework help after school or they would ask me, you know? So they knew they had to get their grades up. So I was proud of all 11 guys. We didn't have anybody have any issues with their grades. So it was a great season and we finished it, win the conference championship.
That's awesome. Thank you, gentlemen, and congratulations. Next, we want to recognize bowling. Now, I know we don't often hear about bowling, but the bowling coach is actually the middle school secretary, Mrs. Patty Blackburn. Patty, would you come up?
I'm here to talk about a very special person on our bowling team. I, too, am a graduate of Norwood. Matter of fact, the year this school was built. My parents were, and my sons were all graduates and sports people here at Norwood. I took on bowling two years ago and Elijah came on the team. This is his second year as a bowler. What's nice about Elijah is he comes from three brothers that are all, they all bowl on my team. So I have the three key brothers and they are so competitive among themselves that makes them stronger as bowlers. Elijah did two wonderful things this year. He went on to districts and he also was very instrumental in our win against Purcell Marion. Excuse me. Purcell Marion, we have a game called the Golden Pin Game. And it's kind of the equivalent as our football team having the Mayor's Cup. And there's a golden pin and if you're in the high school, you will see it in the trophy case because this year it came back to Norwood. And Elijah was really instrumental in that because he rolled two 235 games. And so that helped bring that pin back to Norwood. When we went to sectionals, they take seven teams and then after the seven teams, all the teams that are left out of the 36 go to districts. So he was up against 145 other boys from all over, from our MVC tournament all over southwest Ohio. And what happened was he rolled the highest game at sectionals with a 255. And then he had a 605 series, which was the second highest series that sent him to district. So he's done an amazing job and I see nothing but great things for him and his brother, that is his twin, that missed it by three points. But Elijah did a great job this year and I look for nothing but better things for him.
That's great. I love the competitive spirit, especially among siblings. I feel like I should divulge, my dad graduated from Norwood and I'm a Norwood graduate, too. Go 1986. Next, we'd like to recognize the high school wrestling team and their coach is a Norwood graduate, also our dean of students. Do you notice the theme? Mr. Alsop, come on up.
I'm pretty sure this building opened in 1972, Ms. Blackburn. My name is Derek Alsop and I'm the proud dean of students and varsity wrestling coach here at Norwood High School. I want to say one thing about Byron Keeling, who we added to the coaching staff. He coached middle school all season and their season ends at least a month before ours and immediately just started helping me coach in the high school and came up to state with me when my other two coaches had to be at work. But I'm going to talk about our team now. We won our first conference championship since 1989 this season, through a lot of hard work. We had, we had seven individual league champions. If you guys just take a step forward when I call your name. It was Tyler Harkins, Casey Regal, Juan Davlos, Cameron Addis, Greg Melton, Scott Rains, and Mikey Addis. Our league championship was supported with other placement finishes, second place, Miguel Martinez Gomez, Cody Haney, and Jacob Moore. And then a third-place finish by my first female wrestler, who I'm very proud of because she works very hard and she's a tough competitor. Her name is Liz Banderes Rodriguez. Then we go on to sectionals. If you place top four in sectionals, you go to districts. If you place top four in the district, you go to state. State is reserved for the best 16 wrestlers in the state of Ohio. So it's a very big accomplishment just to go. We had three sectional champions, Tyler Harkins, Casey Regal, and Mikey Addis. And then we had a fourth state qual, uh, fourth district qualifier, Greg Melton. He made his first trip to districts. And that first night at districts was really fun because every single one of them won a match and all four of our wrestlers came back the next day on Saturday. I don't think that's ever happened for Norwood before. So then you go on to districts. Top four districts go to state. We had two district finalists this year, again, the first time in our history, Casey Regal and Mikey Addis. Casey and Mikey are both seniors and I started coaching in Norwood when they were in seventh grade and I started in middle school with them. And I moved up with them when they turned ninth, when they became ninth graders, I started coaching varsity. So I'm going to go through some of their accomplishments because they really deserve it. They are the best senior duo. They are the best senior duo we've ever had in our school's history, most accomplished and their accomplishments show it. Casey Regal, I'm gonna talk about first. He's a four-time league champion, four-time sectional champion, four-time district placer, two-time state qualifier. He had 155 career wins and more tournament titles than I could probably even count off the top of my head. He's gonna go on to compete NCAA Division Two at Bellarmine University where he'll be majoring. He'll be majoring in radiation therapy, so we're really excited about him. Mikey Addis was a three-time league champ, two-time sectional champ, two-time district finalist, and this year he got fifth at state, OHSAA state tournament. That ties for our highest placement in the state. He also had 123 career wins. I'm really gonna miss these guys and I look forward to watching them compete in college. Mikey also, I need to say that he's gonna be playing football at Mount St. Joe as well. So in closing, I'm just gonna make a, talk a little bit more about him because I want to savor this, but I coach wrestling because I know firsthand that wrestling is more than a sport. It is a tool that develops our youth into successful, passionate, and driven adults. Casey and Mikey are examples of great young men who have been molded and forced to grow by the sport of wrestling. I'm so proud to have them carry the Norwood wrestling name into their future endeavors. Thank you.
I would just like to add that we're new to the Miami Valley Conference this year and among your peers, everyone knows, but Mr. Allsop was selected as coach of the year for wrestling and I think that's quite. So thank you, thank you for representing us all so very, very well. Some of you are here because you're a rising star and each month we celebrate our rising stars. Only two are selected from each building. So students, when I call your name, I'm gonna ask that you come up and get a certificate from our board president, Mrs. Jerry Scott Jurese. And then you're gonna stand right here on the carpet and at the end, we'll get some great photos. And then when we dismiss you, of course, you can go out into the main lobby. And Mrs. Havilin here, Ms. Havilin, you waved everyone. She's gonna take more great photos of you for the, I want to say Norwood Enterprise, but it's not that anymore. It's the Norwood Star. It's called that when I delivered it when I was a kid, I keep forgetting. Our Norwood High School Rising Stars for the month of March are Oriana Valero-Gulen and Abigail Carmen. Oriana this year has shown great leadership. Oriana has taken the newer and younger Spanish-speaking ELL students under her wing. Is she here? Oriana, come on up. Did I say your name right? She has helped them through academic and social struggles without the teacher ever asking. In addition to the Spanish-speaking ESL students, she has a great desire to help Arabic speakers learn about their cultures. Oriana wants to make the high school experience enjoyable for her fellow ESL students. Also, Oriana has stepped up and encouraged her senior ELL classmates to apply for scholarships and colleges. She has spent countless lunches and senior seminar bells being their cheerleader for the future. She is what makes Norwood City Schools a great place. Oriana, I want to tell you, you were nominated by Mrs. Rosiola. Please stay here. Mrs. Haddaway nominated Abby, Abigail Carmen. Abby is a student in two of her courses this year, Honors Biology and Anatomy and Physiology. Rarely are sophomores able to handle anatomy and physiology, but Abby's intelligence and work ethic have only helped her survive the course, but she has excelled every quarter. She's also a stop, a top student in the Honors Biology course. Even when she recently was ill, she maintained contact with Mrs. Haddaway to ask what she was missing. She was very productive and making sure that she kept up and proactive to make sure she kept up with both courses in spite of her illness. She's very disciplined in her work and is a great self-advocate. Abby is always respectful to the staff and she is kind to her peers. Her classmates were very concerned when she was absent and anxious to help get her caught up. She has demonstrated great student leadership as a sophomore class officer, participating readily in every fundraiser that they've had this year. And Mrs. Haddaway, and so are we, very honored to be here as your school district of choice, but she's also very proud to be one of your teachers. So congrats. Norwood Middle School Rising Stars for the month of March are Cory Hill and Madison Love. Come on down. Eighth grader rising star is Cory Hill. Cory is an excellent student who excels in his academic classes, always well-prepared every day for school and every class. Driven to do his best in all endeavors he undertakes, he's an excellent role model for other students to emulate, as he's always kind to others and respectful to his teachers. Cory is always willing to help with anything that's asked of him, whether it's a request from his teachers or his classmates. It's with great pride to announce that Cory Hill is the eighth grade rising star for the month of March. It's students like Cory that make Norwood City Schools great. Madison Love is the seventh grade rising star for the month of March. Madison sets an excellent standard by demonstrating peace builder pride, digital dignity, and Norwood pride each and every day at school. Academically, she excels in language arts and approaches every task with class as, and a can-do attitude. Madison credits her success in school to her own high expectations and setting short and long-term goals. Madison epitomizes Norwood pride as an avid cheerleader and plans on playing volleyball next fall. When she isn't at school, Madison enjoys reading Suzanne Collins' The Hunger Games trilogy, exercises regularly, and loves experimenting with recipes in the kitchen. Madison is committed to earning straight A's in school and desires to attend the Ohio State University or the University of Tennessee in order to become a teacher or a veterinarian. Her enthusiastic involvement in Norwood activities and in the community exhibits her commitment to being a positive influence. Norwood is looking forward to seeing what Madison can do in the coming years and encourages her to chase her dreams. It's students like Madison that are tremendous exemplars of Norwood Middle School, a Hall of Fame school, and help make Norwood City Schools great. Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary School Rising Star Students for the month of March are CJ Wagner and Sumaya Lee. CJ is a third grade student and is an absolute joy to have in class. He shows up every day, ready to work, and is excited no matter what the day will entail. CJ is always encouraging and cheering on the other kids in his class. He's even willing to repeat a task when needed so that each student in his class has a chance to participate. CJ is always quick with a smile or a laugh and when he sees someone that might be having a tough day. He's helpful in class as well, going above and beyond to keep the art and music rooms clean as well as the gym. CJ is a fun addition to each class and they're so excited to watch him grow. And in the upcoming years, it's students like CJ that make Norwood City Schools great. Sumaya is a second grade student that shows up for her class each day with a big smile. Is she wearing one right now? She is always excited and positive to go to whichever class she may have that day. Sumaya is encouraging to her fellow classmates and shows patience and kindness to all in class. She goes the extra mile each day to do her best, even if she is working on something that may not be her favorite. When Sumaya finds something that challenges her, she is able to persevere until she gets it. She has the grit needed to make it through even the most difficult tasks. Sumaya is a joy to have in class and they look forward to seeing her each day. It's students like Sumaya that make Norwood City Schools great. Norwood View Elementary School Rising Student Stars, Stars Students for the month of March are Dorothy McLaughlin and Elizabeth McLaughlin. Dorothy is a rising star student for the month of March. Dorothy is a courageous third grade student. She was diagnosed with an illness that left her with almost no vision. This has not stopped Dorothy in the slightest. Dorothy spends her days adapting to both her new physical needs and academic needs along with learning the third grade curriculum. Dorothy is also learning Grail. For most of us, all of these challenges would deflate our spirit, not Dorothy. She comes to school each day, are eager to learn. Dorothy has been an inspiration to both her classmates and her teachers. Congratulations to Dorothy on being a Norwood View Rising Star Student. It's students like Dorothy that make Norwood City Schools great. And we are very proud to have Elizabeth McLaughlin as the Norwood View Rising Star Student. Liz is a responsible fifth grade student who has shown tremendous improvement this year in all academic areas. She's always quick to volunteer her assistance to a friend, whether it's carrying books or working together on an assignment. Also, Liz is a great example of how important family really is. She helps care for her younger sister and they even study together at home. We are so proud of Liz's accomplishments this year. Students like Elizabeth make Norwood City Schools great. I think they brought their own fan club. Williams Avenue Elementary School Rising Star Students for March are Alexis Moore and Kendra G. Alexis is a perfect example of Williams Wildcat Rising Star. Alexis is a very hard worker. She completes all assignments on time, puts her maximum effort into every assignment, always asks for help when needed, and takes her learning seriously. Alexis comes to school early, twice a week for morning tutoring before the day even starts. Alexis is also a great leader and role model for all students in third grade. She shows compassion and kindness for others. Alexis is a trustworthy individual who shows responsibility. She's polite and respectful of adults and her peers. Alexis is a perfect example of a Williams peace builder. She always shows what is expected at all times. It's been such a pleasure to have Alexis in our classroom. The teachers are super proud to call Alexis a Williams Wildcat and it's students like Alexis that make Norwood City Schools great. Kendra G is a very enthusiastic and driven student. Her daily jokes are greatly appreciated by her teachers as well as her model behavior inside and out of the classroom. She works hard and always adds interesting stories to the classroom discussion. Kendra goes out of her way to be friendly to everyone and encourages others to do the same. She's admired for her strength as she consistently does what is right and speaks up when something's wrong. Her upbeat personality and smile shines through in everything she does and that smile is contagious. Is she smiling right now? Kendra has a bright future ahead of her and it's students like Kendra that make Norwood City Schools great. Students, we're gonna ask you to stay right where you are because we want to shake your hand and get our picture with you. We're gonna pause for a moment because we're missing one of our rising stars just to come like that so we can think about our amazing smile. Your signs go right to your entrance and I have the words like that. So parents, again, I just want to remind you that after this event, of course, you can go out into the main lobby. Ms. Havilin will take some more amazing photos. Be sure to come back to the middle school and high school. I think it's in May or is it April when we have our art fair? Yes, our expo first Sunday in Memphis. Is it the first Sunday? So be sure to come back and check out the artwork. Thank you all for coming. Okay, we're ready? Ready. One, two, three. Smile. Okay, I'm gonna do it again. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you, everybody. Thursdays may work for me. Friday, Saturday, I'm.
We're having grapes and grapes starting at seven o'clock.
I don't know if I'm working more six hours today.
I know I'm working eight that day.
Sounded good. Just putting it together.
I think we're gonna go out front again. I think we're gonna go out front again. Ron's gonna have some slides.
Oh, the architect's presentation?
Yes.
Different floors, is that what that is? Oh, okay.
What am I doing there?
The presentation. We're gonna go out here.
Oh, okay, I was like, are you gonna speak? Uh, we'll go ahead with our final presentation for the, this evening. Many folks know, we're in the process of beginning a reconstruction project at the middle school and tonight we have a presentation by representative from Steed Hammond Paul and his name is Ron Hicks. So Ron, welcome.
Aunt, you want me to be your driver?
Ah, that'd be fine. I don't know how much we want to do on the machine.
building.
Yep, yep. Okay.
Ron, help me remember the elevator. What phase, the new elevator is in?
It's a great question. The elevator is actually, the elevator's a challenge, because you're a four-story building, and so we went with a traction elevator, which is a more sophisticated elevator. Most of your two and three-story buildings have hydraulic elevators, but for a building of this size, that needed a car size, we needed to build a traction elevator, which is typical for mid-rise buildings. And so this elevator is a little longer than I thought it was going to take, so we're actually hoping to start some of the foundation work, actually, over the spring break, while the building is empty, to get the elevator pit installed, so that they can continue to do work after spring break down in that area, but then not come out into the area well. But most of you don't know, the elevator's right here. This is, both of these are light wells, and so there's a roof down the first floor of both of these areas. This will be our elevator, and that's where we'll punch through that roof and come up inside the light well. And so the plan is to start at that shaft, so that the school is out, and get the foundation work done before school is out, because we'll be in a non-student area. And right now, they're telling me they think that the elevator will be up and running around the tour, which doesn't totally surprise me. I was hoping we could have it for the start of school, but when I found out, it was a little more of a logistics about the implications of the traction elevator, it seemed that they were saying, it's just not going to, it's not in the cart. So we've asked them to, if they cannot make that elevator operational for the start of school, they have to maintain access to this elevator on an empty basis until this one's up.
What's the plan for that one, once this one is operational?
I don't know. John and I talked about it at one point, you know, it's a cost to keep it maintained, but it is a nice thing to have as a backup, because elevators do go down. Every once in a while, you know, something will happen, and, you know, it's out for service, and somebody's on their way to service it, but you might have a half a day or even a day where it's not operational, and it would be nice to be able to have that available when you need it. But it is a cost to keep it operational, so it's really, we're not touching it as far as the expectations concerned. Some of the other things that we have been able to do, that were not in the original program, besides the elevator, was this connecting corridor on the ground, down on the ground level. The whole building will be getting a coat of paint, everything will be painted, to give it some uniformity, and all the class, well, I can say, all the linings being replaced, and the classrooms are, I think almost every classroom is getting an acoustic ceiling with new laying lining, that I think they'll be very pleased with. It will improve the acoustics of the rooms, as well as conceal all of the HPC system. And that, those are the kinds of things that we made decisions fairly late in the game that really drove the cost down. We made some good decisions from an economic standpoint that allow us to basically do a lot of work above ceiling, rather than having to run around your platter ceilings, and I think it was a good move. It also saved us units that we thought were going to require two heating and air conditioning units, by virtue of the fact that they were going to have a unit down on the floor, when we went to a laying ceiling, it allowed us to go to a singular unit in the middle of the room, as opposed to two down on the floor. So, I think those are some of the things that drove the cost down, and it was obviously painted in us.
Are any of the classrooms getting divided up, or changed in any way for spacing?
No. We are replacing the casework in the life skills room, primarily because taking it out to redo the plumbing would have probably fallen apart, so it's that, that needs all replaced. I think it's getting a new floor as well, so it will, the original program was warm, safe, dry, but it's going to be better than that. You're going to have a building that's going to look quite different and improved aesthetically as well. Any other questions?
Ron, you know, as we like to process things, and if we have questions, we'll be back in touch.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Three. The battery life is good. Next item on our agenda is the education committee report. Ms. Ballard?
All right. First on the list is approval for a field trip coming up for Norwood View to the Wilds. It is an overnight field trip taking place on May 21st and 22nd. It'll be a really fun learning experience for those kids. The second thing that I would like to mention, and remind folks, that the vendor applications for Glow for the Cure are due by May 1st, so if you know folks who would like to sign up for being a vendor for that, they have to do it by May 1st, just to have them reach out to Laura Ferguson. The event is scheduled for May 12th, and that's the balloon glow that's out here on our main field. It's set for 4:00 p.m. to dusk, and they do have a rain day now planned for May 19th, which is a new update. Originally, they did not have a rain day scheduled, so May 12th with a rain delay day of May 19th. Those are the only new items that I have for that.
So are you, did you make a motion for approval of the trip to the Wilds?
Yeah, we can get a motion for approval, though.
Okay. So I have a motion for approval. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood.
Any discussion? Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Tracy?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the list is the approval for the resolution of opposition to House Bill HB 512. There was a recommended action that we, approval of this resolution, excuse me, I believe it was discussed at the first March meeting. I was able to read those documents, even though I missed that meeting, so I would like to go ahead and motion that we approve the resolution, if there is no discussion.
Are you making the motion?
Unless there is discussion for it, yes.
Discussion. Well, she's making the motion. Can we?
Right.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
We have a second by Mr. Faulkner.
Now we can discuss.
Now we can discuss.
Yeah. So, if I may, Madam President, so House Bill 512 is a piece of legislation that is moving through the Ohio House, and the, instead of the education committee, it's being heard in the government accountability and oversight committee. This piece of legislation is a monumental change in the structure of education. It's going to eliminate about 80% of the Ohio Department of Education's duties, as well as the Ohio Higher Education Department, and merge it with the Department of Workforce Transformation. So essentially, you're going to have an unelected, appointed bureaucrat who's going to be responsible for over $13 billion of budget, and can single-handedly change on a whim, funding, evaluating, regulating, all forms of education, whether that be public education, private education, religious education, vocational, college, or homeschool. So this is a very dangerous piece of legislation. I recommend that, as well as we oppose this. Any other discussion?
No, and our, we have sent the letter, I believe, already, that says that we oppose, not until after tonight. After tonight, okay. All right. Any more discussion?
We are also discussing sending someone to represent this board at a state level to show that we are opposing this.
All right. We have a first and a second. Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Tracy?
Yes.
Sophisticated elevator, most of your two and three-story buildings have hydraulic elevators, but for a building of this size, the car size, we need to build a traction elevator, which is typical for mid-rise buildings. And so this elevator is a little longer than I thought it was going to take. So we're actually hoping to start some of the foundation work actually over the spring break while the building is empty to get the elevator pit installed so that they can continue to do work after spring break down in that area, but then not come out into the area well. But most of you don't know, the elevator's right here. This is, both of these are light wells, and so there's a roof down the first floor of both of these areas. This will be our elevator, and that's where we'll punch through that roof and come up inside the light well. And so the plan is to start at that shaft as soon as school is out, get the foundation work done before school is out, because we'll be in a non-student area. And right now, they're telling me they think that the elevator will be up and running around until, which doesn't totally surprise me. I was hoping we could have it for the start of school, but when I found out it's a little more of a logistics about the implications of a traction elevator, it seemed that they were saying it's just not going to, it's not in the cards. So we've asked them to, if they cannot make that elevator operational for the start of school, they have to maintain access to this elevator on an empty basis until this one's up.
What's the plan for that one, once this one is operational?
I don't know. John and I talked about it at one point. You know, it's a cost to keep it maintained, but it is a nice thing to have as a backup because elevators do go down every once in a while. You know, something will happen, and you know, it's out for service, and somebody's on their way to service it, but you might have a half a day or even a day where it's not operational, and it would be nice to be able to have that available when needed. But it is a cost to keep it operational, so it's really, we're not touching it as far as we can. Some of the other things that we have been able to do that were not in the original program besides the elevator was this connecting corridor on the ground, down on the ground level. The whole building will be getting a coat of paint, everything will be painted to give it some uniformity, and all the class, well, I can say all the linings being replaced. And the classrooms are, I think almost every classroom is getting an acoustic ceiling with new laden linings that I think they'll be very pleased with. It will improve the acoustics of the rooms as well as conceal all of the HVAC system. And that, those are the kinds of things that we made decisions fairly late in the game that really drove the cost down. We made some good decisions from an economic standpoint that allow us to basically do a lot of work above ceiling rather than having to run around your platter ceilings. And I think it was a good move. It also saved us units that we thought were going to require two heating and air conditioning units by virtue of the fact that they were going to have a unit down on the floor. When we went to a laden ceiling, it allowed us to go to a singular unit in the middle of the room as opposed to two down on the floor. So I think those are some of the things that drove the cost down, and it was obviously paid that in us.
Are any of the classrooms getting divided up or changed in any way for spacing?
No. We are replacing the casework in the life skills room primarily because taking it out to redo the plumbing would have probably fallen apart, so it's that, that needs all replaced. I think it's getting a new floor as well, so. It will, the original program was warm, safe, dry, but it's going to be better than that. You're going to have a building that's going to look quite different and improved aesthetically as well. Any other questions?
Right, you know, as we like to process things, and if we have questions, we'll be back in touch.
Okay.
Thank you.
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 Three.
All right, battery life is good. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the education committee report. Ms. Ballard.
All right. First on the list is approval for a field trip coming up for Norwood View to the Wilds. It is an overnight field trip taking place on May 21st and 22nd. It'll be a really fun learning experience for those kids. The second thing that I would like to mention and remind folks that the vendor applications for Glow for the Cure are due by May 1st, so if you know folks who would like to sign up for being a vendor for that, they have to do it by May 1st, just to have them reach out to Laura Ferguson. The event is scheduled for May 12th, and that's the balloon glow that's out here on our main field. It's set for 4:00 PM to dusk, and they do have a rain day now planned for May 19th, which is a new update. Originally, they did not have a rain day scheduled, so May 12th with a rain delay day of May 19th. Those are the only new items that I have for that.
So are you, did you make a motion for approval of the trip to the Wilds?
Yeah, we can get a motion for approval then.
Okay. So I have a motion for approval. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood.
Any discussion? Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes.
All right. Next item on the list is the approval for the resolution of opposition to House Bill HB 512. There was a recommended action that we, approval of this resolution, excuse me, I believe it was discussed at the first March meeting. I was able to read those documents even though I missed that meeting, so I would like to go ahead and motion that we approve the resolution if there is no discussion.
Are you making the motion?
Unless there is discussion for it, yes.
Discussion. Well, she's making the motion. Can we?
Right.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
We have a second by Mr. Faulkner.
Now we can discuss.
Now we can discuss.
Now we can discuss.
Yeah. So if I may, Madam President, so House Bill 512 is a piece of legislation that is moving through the Ohio House in the, instead of the education committee, it's being heard in the government accountability and oversight committee. This piece of legislation is a monumental change in the structure of education. It's going to eliminate about 80% of the Ohio Department of Education's duties as well as the Ohio Higher Education Department and merge it with the Department of Workforce Transformation. So essentially, you're going to have an unelected appointed bureaucrat who's going to be responsible for over $13 billion of budget and can single-handedly change on a whim funding, evaluating, regulating all forms of education, whether that be public education, private education, religious education, vocational, college, or homeschool. So this is a very dangerous piece of legislation. I recommend that as well as we oppose this. Any other discussion?
No, and our, we have sent the letter, I believe already, that says that we oppose not until after tonight. After tonight, okay. After tonight. All right. Any more discussion?
We are also discussing sending someone to represent this board at a state level to show that we are opposing this.
All right. We have a first and a second. Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes.
All right. Item 3.3 is the approval of an MOU with ASAP Norwood, which is the Activating Substance Abuse Prevention. Go ahead and motion for that.
I have a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes.
All right. Item 3.3 is the approval of an MOU with ASAP Norwood, which is the Activating Substance Abuse Prevention. Go ahead and motion for that.
I have a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion?
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes.
All right. And the final one for me is 3.4, approval of community connectors partnership agreement. Also a motion?
Okay. I have a motion for approval. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion?
Ballard?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes. Next item is personnel and superintendent recommendations. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President and the board. I'd like to recommend the following. You'll notice on number one, a classified long-term sub library aids, as well as classified sub list on number two, number three, employee of an employee stipend, and then of course number four, pupil activity contracts.
Okay. May I have a motion for approval of the items listed?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion?
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes. Item five is the policy committee report. Mr. Atwood.
Thank you, Madam President. So we have a healthy list of policy revisions and changes that we're going to be going through the first reading tonight. So with the board's permission, I would like to make a motion to have the first reading of the following policies. It's the business advisory council to the board, the emergency management and safety plans, the administrative rules and protocols for the emergency management safety plans, the drug testing for district personnel required to hold a commercial driver's license, drug testing for district personnel, that is listed twice, oh, it's the, it's the rules and protocols is the second one, no tobacco use on district property by staff members, the career advising policy, admission of homeless students policy, the ODE model for local disputes and resolutions procedure for admission of homeless students, the student absences and excuses policy, the tobacco use by students policy, and the no tobacco use on district property policy. Now, I'd like to remind everybody that this is the first reading of these policy changes, so this begins the period of public feedback. These policy revisions and changes can be found on our district website under a specific tab for proposed policy changes if anybody wants to go and take a look at them. But with the board's permission, I would like to make a motion for the first reading of the list of policies.
We have a second? We have a first? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second.
I want to be clear, that's not for acceptance of policies.
Okay, so we don't need to make a motion?
It's only a reading.
Okay. So there's no motion required?
Not unless you're accepting the policy.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, but you still have to approve a motion for the first reading.
We can certainly add that. And we had, Mr. Atwood, you moved?
Yes.
And who was our second?
Ms. Ballard.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So you're saying that folks have a chance to read this online through what date?
So for the next month. So our policy requires two readings before adoption. So tonight is the first official reading of those policy revisions.
And the public can bring us any information or questions up till next month's meeting, correct?
We'll have the second reading next month and then the policy adoption.
Okay.
So, Mr. Atwood, this is a motion to approve the reading?
Correct. The first reading.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes. All right. Moving on to the next item is the building and grounds committee report. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, Madam President. We're going to crash right now. With the board's approval, I've got two items for use of facilities. The Norwood Youth Wrestling Middle School, would like to use the middle school fieldhouse April 7th at 4:00, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM for a pro wrestling show for fundraiser. And then Paycor would like to use the middle school fieldhouse March 23rd from 4:30 to 7:30 for a company basketball game.
So you've made a motion for approval?
Yes.
All right. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ballard. Any discussion? And we do, we do allow Paycor to use our facility. They contribute and make donations to our schools and our different programs. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes. Item seven, finance committee report. Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you, Madam President. My recommendation to committee, I'd like to make a motion for item 7A, approval of financial reports, treasurer's report and bank reconciliation, the financial summary report, appropriations and the check registry.
So I have a motion for approval. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? All these items can also be accessed on our website.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes.
Item 7B, Madam, or 7.2, hold on, I'm getting there, is the recommendation of the Norwood, Norwood Middle School construction bids.
All right. We have a motion for approval of the architect recommendation of the Norwood Middle School construction bids, which we just had our presentation on. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion?
I will just remind you that in your attachments, your exhibits, you had the complete bid results, you had the recommendation from the architect regarding the low bid contractor, and that is what you're approving, and you also had a budget update with respect to the construction project.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Not necessarily so much a discussion point. I do have one question. Do we know what the major difference was between the low bid contractor Monarch and the next contractor that was low bid? What the difference was?
It was about $300,000.
Yeah, but what was, what was the difference in the bids? Was it just ba, basically just price?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as I know, yes. I mean...
Same materials, same timeline?
I mean, do you evaluate the low bid? And if you, you vet the low bidder, and if that goes through the architect's process, that's the recommendation.
Okay.
Just so we're clear on bid, they all have an opportunity to walk through the building many, many times, and they have access to the plans and the scope of the work provided by the architect.
Right, right. But besides price, I was just, because we only saw the recommendation, so we saw the list of who the bidders were and what their prices were, but the only presentation that was, we were given was just based on the low bid contractor.
And that's all the bidding process was. That's it in its entirety.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Please call the roll.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes.
Finally, Madam President, item 7.3 or 7C, whatever you prefer, my recommendation to committee, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of services to review commercial business property values.
We have a motion for approval. May I have a second?
I will second.
We have a second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion?
So, just so that we all understand, is there's a number of commercial properties in the city of Norwood that has been significantly devalued through, through a most recent audit, and so we're just challenging those audit values, right? Those valuation values.
That's correct.
Correct.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Tracy.
Yes.
And that concludes financial.
Thank you. The next item is hearing of the public. We have three requests this evening. Please remember that public participation at board meetings, residents wishing to speak to the board have filled out the form. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. No more than 15 minutes will be devoted to any one topic, and we request the speakers are not allowed to specify or speak of by name any individual that is part of the district or an employee of the district. Our first request is Pastor Sonny James.
He's out there.
Come on down. It's like the whole back went black.
I would request that the board would allow one of the other speakers to go first.
Okay.
That's related to the same issue.
All right. We have a request to, from Maya Cordell.
Hi. As you guys know, I'm Maya Cordell. This is my first year at Norwood High School. So far, I have done soccer, I have done track. I have met the most amazing people and the most amazing teachers, and there's some of them over there, too. These, like, I respect so, I respect all these teachers so much. All these teachers catch my eye. One teacher, he cares, let's just say, his actions speak louder than his words. Every teacher cares for us, but this one teacher puts a smile on our face, makes sure we're cool, but that one teacher isn't here. That one teacher, let me just say, I can, I can speak for the students and say, we, this one teacher puts a smile on our face, makes sure we're cool every day, jokes around with us, 'cause some of us don't have it easy at home. I'm one of them. When I come to school, this teacher seem, makes it seem like all my problems go away. This teacher isn't here no more. It seem like all my problems are swarming me. I'm just saying, I can't say why he's gone, but I can say something. He taught me if what I believe in, go for it. I have a voice, use it. So many students have been using their voices, but it seem like so many teachers been telling us to keep it down. I'm sorry, I cannot keep this down. This teacher, he makes sure I'm okay. Let's just say, my understanding, I do track, right? I have to walk home, but my house is further to some other students. If we could raise money for jackets or new equipment or even construction, why can we make, why can we raise money for transportation? Why can't we raise money for, to make sure that my little sister knows that I'm going to be home tonight? I'm sorry, I, I tell my sister, I love you, be safe. I don't know if I'm going to make it home tonight, but just know this, I'm going to always be here by your side spiritually. I'm sorry, but like, this one teacher always made sure that I was home. Now I had to promise my little sister, I might not be able to make it home. This teacher, his head was in the, his head was in the right place and his heart was in the right place, but I don't think y'all see the message. He didn't care about his job, he cared about our safety. And the fact that my safety is at risk now, I don't know. These school shootings scare me. They scare a lot of students. Yesterday, so many students didn't come to school. And the fact is that I didn't feel safe 'cause my one teacher wasn't there to make it, to make it feel like, oh, my problem's gonna be okay, it's gonna be okay. But I don't see this teacher no more. How am I gonna make sure that it's okay? I'm sorry, but I have to stand up for what's right. So many students, and I believe, like, I started a poster, once I heard what happened, I got posters, made them. It said, today's gonna be a good day. So many students signed to these posters, they're upstairs right now. It's not that I was gonna hang them up, but teachers thought I was. I'm just saying, if a teacher was in his shoes right now, they would want the same thing, wouldn't they? I'm just saying, I honestly do love this teacher. He has, I have never knew what it really meant that one person can change the world, and this one person changed thousands of lives. I'm just saying, I'm gonna be honest with you guys, if I don't see this teacher soon, I'm not gonna be doing track no more. There's so many students that say that they're not gonna do track no more. This one teacher strived me, he made sure, like, Maya, you could do this. Just don't think that, just because you're not fast enough, don't think that you can't run. He made me believe. To, to this day, I'm having so much fun in track just because of him, but I can't see him. I'm sorry, but I want my teacher back, I want my coach back. Can y'all please tell me when my coach is gonna be back? Can y'all please tell me when I'm gonna be a smile and tell my little sister, guess what, you're gonna see me when I get home today? I'm sorry, but I should, we all want our teacher back. And I don't know if you guys can promise that, but please, work your guys hardest. If I don't see my coach on my first track meet, I am not running, 'cause he's the first person that showed me that I would do anything if I try. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go down, Pastor?
My name is Pastor Sonny James. I come tonight not representing any organization, not representing necessarily any families other than my own. I'm probably one of the most qualified individuals to make this challenge today. First of all, let me just say, I didn't come here tonight for smiles, I didn't come here to be faking phony. I'm not interested in any glossover smiles. In this community, I take lives very seriously. It's one thing when adults approach me and have issues. It's another thing when children approach me and have issues. My situation is this, if we do what we're supposed to do, I'm not a problem. But doggone it, when we don't do what we're supposed to do, when we don't show respect to other people, when we don't treat people equal, that's when I have a problem. And we have a problem today. I started in Norwood years ago. This is the third administration. Many of you may not even know the problems. My first son, who is now a professional world champion boxer, started in the wrestling program, taking after his dad. I traveled the country, All-American Walk On Four Rides Scholarship. I know how to win, but I also know the devil. I also know the hoods that we wear. I also know the fake phony and frauds that we can be. Defamation of one's character is illegal. If you don't know what it means, Google it. These children, children that approach me should not have to come to me and say, Pastor James, oh my God, I'm hearing inappropriate, illegal things. If you can vote, have your voice mean something, or sit down. Not one person. Now I understand if we have an administrative review, I'm all for that, but to... But to allow children to walk around and hear things that are just totally false, and nobody having the guts to stand up. I don't work for you, you don't pay me, and you can't run me or control me. And most of you know that. But I'm here to say, if we don't list a phone tree tonight, you do it for everything else. Defamation of somebody's character shouldn't be tolerated. You talk about me, I can care less. But when an individual, I came through this program, two of my sons were adopted with disabilities. Most of you don't know, I am angry with Norwood at times. When they were left at the stadium all by themselves underneath the stadium. When one of my sons was jump beat, poured water on, kicked on, and the administration turned their cheek. And now I have my other son, he's a part of almost every program you've got. And what do we do? We take an individual that these individuals love and adore. And all the rumors, we need to make a statement tonight. An administration review is going underway, there are rumors happening, this administration has nothing to do with the rumors, but there is nothing criminal, and we don't endorse it and support it. Stand up for a change, Norwood. I'm often asked, why is it that people challenge us with the reputation of old? Because your faces change, but the process stays the same. That's just a handful of athletes tonight. Each and every one of them have peers that love them and families that love them. How would you like to show up for your first track meet? And you come and you're the only ones buying tickets. Don't play with these students anymore. They're not just gonna stand back and allow you to Mickey Mouse them anymore. I understand an administrative review, I don't have a problem with that. But when you allow your children, when my son comes to me, now you did it once, you did it twice, you won't get away a third time, shortcake. Over my dead body, you send out a statement and you make this man honored, separate from the administrative review. A simple statement, we apologize to all of the families, the students.
Your time's up.
I know it is.
Thank you.
And so is ours as adults. But stop being fake, phony and fraud. But start standing up for these young people. Send out a statement tonight, or pack up all of your sports gear, put them in a box. Go away now. Defamation of character. Google it.
Our next speaker is Alice.
I don't know what was going on there, but Williams is an honor, it's that, so I feel really dumb now. I'm not gonna go that way. I just wanted to be a parent representative to tell you that there's parents in Norwood very concerned about 512, too. So you're gonna write a letter, or?
Tonight.
Tonight? Like an opposition testimony to blessing the chair? And you guys wanna send somebody, so next Wednesday? They keep doing the stuff on Wednesdays.
We hope they keep.
Or Bridget would tell us, right?
Represent us.
Bridget, you're gonna go?
So Bridget Kelly is gonna let us know, because she says they're changing the dates?
They underhandedly changed the dates, right? Yeah, so, Brandon and I have been getting on social media and telling people, get excited about HB 512 because it's really scary, and you should be concerned. It's so comically concerning that some people think, well, how could this pass? It's ridiculous. And it will pass, so we all need to do something about it. And if anybody needs phone numbers to call, I've posted them on the Norwood City Political Discussions, on Brandon's post, everyone on the committee who is hearing this. And you can go ahead and start contacting your state senator, who is Cecil Thomas, because he'll be next to hear it, because this will pass the committee, scaringly. That's not a word, but that's how scary this is. So, that's that. But I thought of something else. Is it okay if I mention this other thing? It's the cheer-in that we did, we got on the news. I forgot about that. So, Williams Avenue Elementary, they did a story on Mr. Gabbard. And we did a cheer-in, and we had done a cheer-in in October for National Walk to School Day. And we did one at Sharpsburg, and Tanya Grubb helped me with that, I let her lead it. I still haven't done one at View, I need a parent at View to be the lead on it. Are we being filmed and put on cable? So if there are any parents seeing this on Facebook or cable television, I need a parent at View to help me out and be the lead on a cheer-in. And all we do is stand in the entrance and go, yay, welcome to school, welcome to school, high five, high five. It's so easy, and it makes every kid's day. So we'll be doing it again, probably April 2nd, the first day back from spring break at Williams. And that's that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item nine are our reports. We have board announcements. Do we have any board announcements? I know, Amber, you mentioned something about the glow.
I did, I probably should have saved it for here, I was so excited about it. Under the avenues for success, that's their major project, is the glow for the cure. It is open to the public. As I was saying before, for anybody who may have missed it, Laura Ferguson is the one that's in charge of that. If you would like to be a vendor at that event, the signups are due by May 1st. Setup that afternoon is between 1:00 and 3:30. And the event is from 4:00 till dusk, and then they light up the balloons, and it's absolutely gorgeous, it takes place right on the field here behind the high school. It's a fantastic event with a really amazing cause. I would tell anybody with a booth or vendor license or know somebody, get them involved, have them get space. The money raised really supports an amazing program, and she's doing a ton of work. So I think it's worth looking into. They did announce a rain date, the original date is May 12th. If it rains, they're moving that to May 19th.
Item 902, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President and the board. We have wonderful news to share. Our winter athletes were awarded to, were given their awards, actually, for the middle school and the high school sports this month, and we are preparing for spring sports. In fact, many of those practices are underway. On the website, the Teacher of the Year nomination information was posted, and parents and teachers may nominate a teacher to be recognized by our school district. We do participate in the Celebrate Excellence Teacher of the Year Recognition Program with Hamilton County Educational Foundation Award Ceremony, and that will take place this spring. So we invite staff, parents and community members to nominate a Norwood educator for this award. One nominee will be selected for the entire district to represent at the 2018 Celebrate Excellence Award Ceremony. And the characteristics to be considered, but certainly are not limited to, demonstrating high commitment to student achievement, has the ability to challenge students at all levels, is someone who extends himself or herself to make a positive difference, continues to improve and grow professionally, and demonstrates innovation and best practices. I want to add that the nominations are due by 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, March 20th, and that's 2018, and there is an online form to complete that process. I want to end by saying, spring break begins March 26th, and we wish our families and our students a wonderful break and safe travels, and we will be back in session on Monday, April 2nd. This concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Next item, 903, is the Great Oaks Report, Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you, Madam President. The Great Oaks Board met last night, and Miss Alice gave me an update with four items that I'd like to bring to your attention. The first, they have a new seal for the Ohio Means Jobs. This is a program that the high school students can earn recognition by showing they're prepared to contribute to the marketplace or the communities. And it'll be a seal on the diploma, and that's a nice program they've got going there. They also spoke about camps for the eighth and ninth graders. This gives them a chance to experience the Oaks for a week during the summer, and I've sent the information on to Miss Sabo to have her put it on the website. They had a first reading for an Oaks levy. This is for, I think they said it was nine counties that'll be affected by this, so that'll be on the ballot coming up, and we'll have more information on that as it goes. And then finally, on a nice note to end on, Miss Ashley Gee is a Norwood student who was the Spotlight Student of the Month for the Oaks. So, very good for her. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item 904, avenues for success report, Ms. Ballard, if you have anything to add.
Nope, that was it.
Okay.
That was it. Thank you.
All right, the next item is 905, the legislative report. Obviously, this week, we've been concentrating on House Bill 512. The board has taken or will take action after tonight's meeting to oppose that, and Mr. Atwood will be our representative, if needed, to go speak. That's all I have to report. The next item is meeting notification for approval of future meetings. And they are listed for the future meetings that we have. Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018 will be held in the Norwood Middle School Library. And our regular board meeting will be Thursday, April 19th, at the Norwood High School Mini Auditorium. May I have a motion for approval?
I'm questioning that date, I think that's April the 10th.
April the 10th?
Yes.
Not the 19th? Okay. Change that to Thursday, April 10th?
Are we sure? No, it's the third Thursday of the month, and it's the Tuesday prior to that.
Mm-hmm.
So the 10th? So the 10th would be the date for the middle school meeting, not the 3rd?
Yeah, the committee would be.
But the 19th is correct.
Okay. So the 19th is, let's go back. Tuesday, April 10th, in the Norwood Middle School, will be the committee meeting.
Mm-hmm. Sorry, and then the 19th?
Then Thursday, April 19th, in the Norwood High School Mini Auditorium, will be our regular board meeting. Any discussion other than?
Amending the.
Amending the agenda, so that we change the dates?
Yes, please.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Atwood to amend the agenda to change the dates and to accept the corrected dates. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Any further discussion?
Motion to amend. Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Atwood? I'm sorry, Scott Tracy?
Yes.
You will still need your motion to approve.
Okay, may I have a motion for the approval of a future meeting?
So moved.
So seconded.
Mr. Faulkner, Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Tracy?
Yes. Our next item is executive session. We will enter into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22G1, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee or regulated individual. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion.
A motion by Mr. Bryant?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ballard, any discussion? Okay.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Tracy?
Yes. We're going to go into executive session at 8:05.